Okay, it's 4:59. All right, good evening, everyone. It's 5 o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order for the Federal Way Special City Council Meeting for March 4th, 2025. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Councilmember Tran is not available. The attempts to do the Zoom with him are unsuccessful technology-wise. His absence is excused, both for this meeting and the next. And Stephanie, do I need to say at the next meeting as well, or will I do it then? Okay. All right, now we are on to the Special City Council Meeting. We are here for a study session. Autumn, good to see you. Autumn Gressit is present. She is our Performing Arts and Event Center Community Relations Liaison and Contract Administrator, and will also have a presentation from Joe McElwain, J&amp;M Arts Consulting, and he will be remote. With that, Autumn?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Council President Cochmar, and Council Members. Autumn Gressit, Community Relations Liaison. I will begin this evening by starting off our presentation and then turning it over to Joe, and then we will finish with just a few words from our foundation, who has been along this process with us. The Performing Arts and Events Center, Federal Way PAC Collaborative, we dubbed this name "the collaborative" because we decided to explore the opportunity of re-engaging our community, our foundation, and/or supporting nonprofit, and seeing what that looks like to fund the PAC based off the original blue ribbon pro forma structure. A little bit about that is Tanya Carter and myself began talking with other performing arts and events center general managers, municipalities, all the way from Vancouver, B.C., across the country to Florida, Texas, Wyoming, trying to understand, are we an anomaly, or are we doing things per industry standard? A lot of what we found is most of our stuff is industry standard, but we do have a slightly different structure in that we operate within a municipally-owned facility, a venue management company that is a for-profit, and then we have a nonprofit that is engaged to help raise funds. Initially, in that pro forma study, which you'll see as Joe talks through this, there was significant contributed revenue that was looked at. But the other deep piece of this puzzle when we entered into opening the PAC was being more engaged with our community. How many events are we having? How often are we inviting people into this? And we began to look at, could we conduct a study and working groups that allow us to focus on that? And that's how the PAC Collaborative came to be. All three entities within that, the city, the Performing Arts Center, or OVG 360 that's running it, and then our existing foundation, were invited to the table to have those discussions and dive deeper into a more transparent conversation on how we move into the next phase and the next season of the Performing Arts Center. Some of that purpose was, again, to study budget projections, business plans, operations, and then provide recommendations through Joe's assistance on financial performance and community perception. Some of our objectives that you can see were to improve the image of the PAC, expand programming for children and families, improve affordability of venues through contributed revenue, and several other ones. And without further ado, I would like to introduce Joe McElwain. Joe McElwain is with J&amp;M Arts. We entered into an agreement beginning of last year, 2024, with Joe McElwain to begin all of this study, and he will take you through the current organizational structure and the remainder of his report.
Thank you, Autumn. It's great to see you all. First, I'd like to extend my appreciation to Mayor Farrell and the City Council for the opportunity to serve the City of Federal Way in this capacity. It has been a pleasure to collaborate with the members of city staff, the PAC staff, and the Arts Foundation Federal Way Board of Directors in an effort to improve the cultural impact and financial performance of the PAC. I think this project really has been a rewarding experience for everyone involved, and I just want to thank them all, and thank you all once again. I had a little bit of information built in to share that pretty much Autumn just covered. So we're going to go to Slide 4, if we could. And this slide is essentially a recap for many of you, but it lays out the roles of each of the three entities that were engaged in this process: the city, the management company, and the foundation. Of course, the City of Federal Way is the legal owner of the PAC, ultimately responsible for the venue's successful operation and the short- and long-term care of the facility. OVG 360, the management company, by contract provides venue management services. And the Arts Foundation Federal Way is an independent nonprofit that currently provides financial support to help cover a portion of the expenses of the educational performances that take place for school groups in the venue. Slide 5, please. As I mentioned earlier, as Autumn mentioned, from a financial standpoint, the most important discovery for the group in this process was that the original pro forma budget called for the development of annual contributed revenue from the private sector to support the programming and operations of the PAC. By year 5, this important funding source was projected to be 3/4 of a million dollars. For a community of the size of Federal Way and for a facility as beautiful and well-designed as the PAC was, this was considered to be a conservative projection. Slide 6. There was another major discovery in our process, of which those who have been a part of the foundation from the beginning are aware. It was the dream of members of Arts Foundation Federal Way in its early incarnation to create a venue like the PAC for the Federal Way community. And while they could not have made it happen on their own, and the city's leadership and financial investment was critical to bringing the project to life, it's important to note that the foundation did help generate some financial support from the private sector and community support for the project during its design and construction phase. Next slide, please. However, a formal partnership between the city and the foundation was not pursued in those early stages of PAC's operation. And I put forward to you, as a result, key connections between the PAC and the community for program development, audience development, community engagement, and fundraising were not solidified in the way they might have been. It's for these reasons that most city-owned performing arts centers across the country either delegate the operation of their venue to a nonprofit organization, or the city has a formal agreement in place with a nonprofit foundation partner that engages in and supports the functions that I just mentioned, fundraising being part of that, but there's more to the story. So, next slide, please. So in response to these discoveries and with the hope of finding the best possible path forward, we invited members of the city and management company staff and the foundation board to the table for a series of large group meetings and smaller workshops. We've been referring to this process, as Autumn mentioned, and to the three entities involved as the PAC Collaborative. I want to note that the foundation has been very generous to represent the nonprofit sector in this process. The foundation is not committed yet to engage in the negotiation of a new agreement with the city or to play the envisioned role of a nonprofit partner in this collaborative over time. But what they have done is helped to lay the critical groundwork for themselves or for another nonprofit partner to ultimately assume this role in the collaborative. Next slide, please. If the vision of this collaborative is realized, it would become a formal partnership between the city and Arts Foundation Federal Way. We would argue a more robust and larger MOU, for instance. It would be a partnership in which all three entities, the city, the management company, and the foundation, are aligned in a single set of goals and a mutually agreed-upon mission and vision. It would be a partnership in which each entity plays a role that is clearly defined, meets all legal and audit requirements, of course, and is appropriate to the skills and interests of its respective members and staff. It would be an effective team that commits to frequent, transparent communication, as well as a shared definition of and commitment to success. They would share in the process of budgeting. They would share in the process of making sure that the community is aware of the new programs they're developing and how the operation is working. And it would be a commitment on all parts for each entity to work together to serve the community and to solve problems as they arise as a team and to create new opportunities for expansion and growth. Next slide, please. The suggested next steps in the process of formalizing the PAC collaborative partnership, should all three entities agree to continue forward, would be as follows. We're suggesting that the estimated timeline to if everyone agrees to pursue a more formal partnership, that would take at least six to nine months, maybe even another year, to work through all the details and issues. It's assumed that at least one paid staff member, a professional fundraiser, would be required to facilitate the work of this foundation or a nonprofit organization to facilitate fundraising and to work side-by-side with the PAC staff on audience development and building the relationship more strongly with the community. And that would also include some programming engagement. Integration of the new foundation staff member with the management company's onsite team would be important to the success of this partnership. And programming and education and community engagement events, as well as some maybe new mainstage presentations, would become a function of the collaborative as a team rather than exclusively with the management company. And knowing Stacia, she'd be very open to engaging the foundation in exploring opportunities for new program development. Next slide, please. Finally, I believe that if all three parties commit to building this partnership and bringing the PAC Collaborative to life, some of the great outcomes might include the ones that are listed here. There's so much more to the story, though. I just want to draw out that, from a financial standpoint, which was, again, sort of the origin of this conversation with Tanya and Autumn, when you add fundraising revenue into the mix from the private sector, you start to begin to bring into balance the operation. And again, as she mentioned, this is a little more standard. This concept is more standard across the nation than the one in which we operate now. And again, we want to honor the foundation for what they've done so far in supporting especially the education programs. But a more robust and integrated relationship between the foundation or another nonprofit and the city staff and PAC staff would lead to, I believe, a balanced revenue stream of about 1/3 ticket sales, 1/3 rental revenue, and 1/3 fundraising. And all of this would give the City of Federal Way the opportunity to consider shifting some of the resources it currently invests in the PAC's operations into reserve funds to maintain and repair, and maybe even someday expand the Performing Arts Center itself. So, thank you all for your time and your thoughtful consideration, not only of the outcomes of this process so far, but also of what the future might hold if the PAC Collaborative is formalized and put into action. I can say that, speaking from my own experience and the experiences of countless colleagues I've run across over the years, I really believe that performing arts centers are most successful when there's a meaningful relationship between a passionate group of community leaders who understand the value of the PAC and its programs and the community the PAC exists to serve. And I believe this really can best be achieved if a nonprofit organization is engaged as a legitimate partner in the PAC operations and program. I think that's it for me. I'd like to hand it back to Autumn now to bring the presentation to a close, and of course, I look forward to more conversation than any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. A few other things that we wanted to highlight as part of this process is some positive growth regardless of partnership. As Joe mentioned, if the PAC Collaborative were to be approved as we moved an MOU forward, there is already some things that have happened. Part of that is strengthening our relationships, transparent communication. There was a deep disconnect between the foundation that currently supports our Arts for Youth programs and how we engage deeper in the community, how we reach them from a contributed revenue and/or just engagement standpoint. So some of those things were uncovered through this process and will continue to grow and flourish, whether it was the Arts Foundation Federal Way or a separate supporting nonprofit. Our Arts Foundation Federal Way members are here tonight. Thank you all. Caroline Vedino, Jean Burbage, Cindy Pennett, Alan Smith, Erica Rudnicki. They are part of this three-phase that took us through this process, and I will turn it over to a couple of them to finish our presentation and then open it up for Q and A. One thing we want to highlight again as we move forward is that through these partnerships and a shared vision, we can make the PAC stronger. It will take a deep relationship to make that happen. Cindy?
Good evening, Council. My name is Cindy Pennett, and I have been on the Arts Foundation Board way back when Joanne Paquette was the president, and back before 2015, we raised over a million dollars to help build the PAC. Since then, in the last eight years, it's been reaffirmed over and over again that the arts and culture are fundamental to the health and the livability of our community. We are growing our impact at the PAC, and it is so much fun to see all the good things that are happening there. And I want to thank Jack Walsh for coming last week, or was it this week, no, last week, to our Dr. Kaboom presentation of Arts for Youth, and there were at least 1,500 kids that came over three different shows, sixth graders, all the sixth graders in the Federal Way public schools. And they got to see some exciting science experiments, so that was pretty fun. And also just another comment, that we have expanded our board. We have some wonderful people on our board, and one of them in particular is Erica Rudnicki, and she is Executive Director at the Federal Way Public Schools, so we have a direct liaison with the schools now. And it just shows we're growing our impact with the schools. So, thank you. Turn it over to Erica.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to speak with you for a few minutes. This is my first year serving on the board. I'm also Executive Director of Teaching for Learning in Federal Way Public Schools. And I've had the privilege of overseeing arts education in our district, and not only in our district now, but broadening into the community. This past couple weeks, we were able to host a district music festival at the PAC. We had over 600 students who volunteered to be part of this group, and we had orchestra, choir, and band performances, and we were able to use the space for the entire day. And students who had the opportunity to work with guest conductors, they had the opportunity to perform with students from across all the schools. So not only students that they work with on a regular basis, but we combined the groups, so all of the high schools and middle schools were represented. To watch their faces when they come into that space on a stage, and to watch their eyes and believe that now they are seeing this space that they may have never seen before, never performed on a stage like that. Many of our students will perform in a gym. They'll also perform for their families, but now they get a broader community, and it brings our community together. It was something really special to see the evening performance with, we had a packed house, and the family saying, wow, this space, and never being in that space and coming together and to experience music, but also to celebrate our students and to come together in support of music education. So it's been a privilege to be on the board, the foundation, and the services that they provide, and for the services that we're able to offer our students and our families. So I just thank you for the opportunity and look forward to our connections.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. As you can see, this group of collaborative members has a deep-seated impact and will continue to do so should we move forward. I'd like to open it up to any questions and go from there.
All right, Pastor McDaniel.
Funny. I always have questions. What can I say? First one, I need a little education on MOU. So my understanding is, looking at the three partners in this scenario, it will be the City of Federal Way, OVG 360, and then the Federal Way Arts Foundation, or whatever the final name's going to be for it. Is that correct?
The MOU would be between the City of Federal Way and Arts Foundation Federal Way. Through the contract that OVG has with the city, they would be a representative on our behalf, but they would not be named or part of the exact MOU that we craft.
Got you on that one. Now, when the MOU, I need a better understanding. What exactly does an MOU? I know it's a memorandum of understanding, but what exactly, is there a financial tie to that? What would it look like in the paper of what it would say?
At this point in time, we have not negotiated or walked through all of the details that we would recommend for the MOU. That would be something that would need to be vetted through legal as we walked through either a supporting nonprofit or Arts Foundation Federal Way. Similar to our RAOs, there's not necessarily a financial tie, dollars exchanged for dollars, but with our RAO MOUs, we waive rent. In this MOU, we may have goals or objectives, or how we all operate together to make sure that programming, contributed revenue, we know who handles what. It really outlines the who, what, when, where, why of what we're trying to do, so there isn't any questions. I haven't seen a contract in that specific realm before, again, because money isn't exchanging hands. We have an MOU currently with Arts Foundation Federal Way that covers in regards to Arts for Youth. Should they choose to move forward in a negotiation such as this, it would expand that to cover all of what's happening at the PAC in a deeper way.
Now, would the new MOU replace the previous one, then?
Correct.
Okay. And then, reading through the write-ups in the paper we had on there, it looks like the biggest thing that they're looking at for fundraising would be donors, and then also a gala. Is that what it's looking like at the moment?
I think that is a small tidbit of what would be a deeper negotiation and details written out as we walked through the MOU writing process.
Okay. And I know the city invests roughly a million, and then we have about a $700,000 payment for the actual facility itself. My assumption is that the MOU and the foundation connection would be to lower the city's million-dollar investment a little bit? Is that what the take a burden off?
Ideally, any additional contributed revenue or anything that a foundation would be able to help offset some of those programming expenses would help shift where the city's investment goes. One thing to keep in mind as well, we are currently investing upwards of a million dollars. As the building ages, that money may need to be reinvested in capital expenditures. There is not currently a budget set aside for capital expenditures. So I can't answer exactly how much we'd be able to reduce, but the goal would be to offset so that way we don't have a deeper impact to the general fund.
Gotcha. And then, during the conversation and the meetings and all that stuff, other than doing the fundraising, is there anything else that the foundation would be helping out with the PAC, or is the funding side of the thing the biggest piece that was talked about?
Funding was a big one. We broke it up into, you can see in your final reports, into six different working groups to kind of talk through communications, PR, fundraising. Programming was a big one. Deepening the engagement that a foundation, which is community members, volunteer members, have with the Performing Arts Center on what's going on to that stage. Is there other programming that needs to happen? Helping shift some of that and bringing additional things to the PAC, partially through contributed revenue, through donors, corporate sponsorships, things like that. It's a dynamic that would need to be built and sort of projected out.
Gotcha. And then, the last one right now is, we have MOUs, like you had mentioned, with other groups. If the foundation becomes a partner with us on this scenario, do they then become a middleman and work with us, and then the groups that are out there that we're trying to bring in and provide these MOUs for, for like the singing or the acting or something? How do they fit with those other entities that we currently work with, or are they completely standalone?
Completely standalone. There may be fundraising grants or donor contributed revenue that they bring in that helps offset some of those expenses that come from having those MOUs with the resident artist groups, but they wouldn't be a middleman to them. They would be completely on their own.
All right. And I spoke too soon. My last question. If they are able to do fundraising, do the funds stay in the foundation, and then the foundation will transfer funds to the city, or do the funds go automatically into a city account?
They would stay in the foundation, and then one of the things we would need to work out is if they are just paying for items that are happening for programming, such as artists' fees, et cetera, or is that funding being directed to a city account, and then we're paying for items? That detail, financially and legally, hasn't been worked out, but initially, it'll stay with the foundation and be earmarked.
Gotcha. And the last one was, looking at the blue ribbon panel for this and then comparing to this one, is there really much difference between what the blue ribbon panel had mentioned compared to these guys? What was the biggest takeoff that this new report provided us between the two?
One of the biggest things that we are missing is contributed revenue. As far as operational expenses and revenue coming in, we are meeting those and/or pretty closely in line with what the blue ribbon panel said that the building would do.
Thank you.
All right. Before I turn it over to the next question by a council member, I did want to note that Councilmember Asefa Dawson is appearing remotely. We see you there, Lydia, so I just want to say hi. All right, Councilmember Honda, then Councilmember Dobie, then the Council President.
Thank you. So I have the contract in my hand, and I'm going to ask some questions from the contract.
Okay.
Exhibit A is under Services. It says that the stakeholder engagement under Section E, conduct one-on-one interviews via phone or Zoom with key representatives from up to three local arts organizations. Can you tell me which art organizations?
Absolutely. I'll turn it over to Joe at this point. I know that he had multiple one-on-one conversations, more than three, from what I can remember, but I'll let him answer that question directly.
Yeah, actually, I do need to clarify that. I did not meet with individual arts organizations from Federal Way that were engaged in the PAC, so PAC RAOs, for instance. But I did do plenty of research with other, all of my other Northwest representatives as far as PACs are concerned. So I looked at other performing arts centers, how they're functioning, and brought that to the table in terms of our analysis. But I did not meet with individual RAOs in Federal Way for this project.
Okay. Even though in the contract, it says that that was going to be one of the things that was expected. The second thing is that, under Stakeholder Engagement II, facilitate up to two focus groups, either Zoom or in person, with representatives from local arts organizations and identified community partners. Did that happen?
That was included with the Arts Foundation. We brought them in as a local community member and identified where we can expand our reach into the community, such as RAOs and other arts organizations that are happening within Federal Way. That was part of our focus groups in August, September, and then October, November.
But you guys didn't talk with like the chorale or the symphony or those kind of folks who use a facility?
We didn't bring them in specifically for these focus groups. They were part of the identification of who needs to be reached and how we could engage with them better.
Okay. And then, it talks about investigating other venues around the area. And my question on that is, when that was done, are those venues breaking even, or are they making a profit? And how long, if they're making a profit, how long did it take for that to happen?
Joe, I'll let you take this one as well.
Sure. In Edmunds, Kirkland, Tacoma, Arts Live, the several others that I talked to, it is varying right now in terms of the performance, but I will tell you that generally speaking, none of those performing arts centers are in a situation in which they are facing deficits of the size and scope of the one that Federal Way's Performing Arts Center is currently managing. So if there were deficits, they were in the neighborhood closer to, you know, the $100,000, $200,000 mark, and not so much the million-dollar mark for every performing arts center across the country. This is also a tricky time to answer that question because of the impact, remaining impact, residual impacts of the pandemic and a complete shift in the landscape of the performing arts support across the country that producing and presenting organizations are facing some challenges from a financial standpoint. But over the last decade-plus, these organizations, generally speaking, have been much closer to balanced than the Federal Way is currently.
Why do you think that is?
Because every one of them has a nonprofit arm or is being run by a nonprofit organization. So the cities do not run their organizations, and there are no for-profit organizations in the ones that I studied engaged in operating their facilities. Now, the City of Tacoma has, you know, in recent years, did make that move and changed their relationship with what was called the Broadway Center, is now called Tacoma Arts the Broadway Center, is now called Tacoma Arts Live. That organization ended up moving to a separate location and still is in operation. But I can tell you that the City of Tacoma is currently trying to study in very similar fashion, how to bring its operating budget into balance because the loss of that nonprofit organization has eliminated contributed revenue from their revenue streams. And that has changed dramatically their financial picture.
Thank you. And my last question is, on phase three, it talks about greater community engagement. What would that look like? And how would we do that? Is there a plan for that?
Joe, do you want to take this one as part of?
Yeah, I think we can team on this one. But I think the if and when this collaborative partnership comes to fruition. Community engagement completely changes when, as I mentioned in the very end of my portion of the presentation, when you have essentially a nonprofit board of directors and one or two members of staff on this nonprofit organization, it changes the way the Performing Arts Center interacts with the community. Yes, it develops new donors. It also develops new support and engagement, new board members, new committee members. It's a different, I wish I could explain it better, but it is a very different approach to nurturing and building a relationship with the community that the Performing Arts Center serves when you have a nonprofit organization with a mission to serve that community, driving its daily work. And the best way I can illustrate it is my own experience with Edmunds Public Facilities District, which was its own, is its own municipality. When I was first hired to take that job, I was hired by a board of five members that were appointed by city council. And that was the extent of our reach into the community. So, and they, like you, had had a nonprofit organization that had been developed to help generate contributed revenue for the capital project to renovate the building and create the center. When I came on board, I said immediately, as much as I appreciate and recognize the hard work that was done by that small group of people, the five-member public board, I knew immediately that without the engagement of the nonprofit board that had been developed, which at that time was very small, without building that board and engaging that board in more of the details and operations and programming and support of the staff, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and audience development, and yes, the development of contributed revenue, I knew we couldn't be successful. And as it turns out, that board, the Edmunds Center for the Arts Board, which was ultimately developed into a more robust and more integrated partner, once we established that, everything changed for our organization. And we grew exponentially and balanced our budget successfully over a 10- to 12-year period, including through the recession because we had the nonprofit organization engaged and maintaining those donor relationships and community relationships throughout.
Thank you. And I do have one other question, just one. So I often hear from folks around Federal Way that they looked at going to an event at the PAC and they looked at the cost of the ticket and they decided they could not afford to go. Are the cost of the tickets, and I know that they change depending on what event is there?
Correct.
Are they in line with other venues around the country that you studied? And I don't know that we could lower the price of tickets. But if that's something that's preventing people from attending an event, is there something we could do to help people attend events?
So two things. When we look across our regions, looking from Federal Way to someplace in California and trying to understand if the ticket prices are equivalent is not an apples-to-apples scenario. But when you look across our region, yes, the shows that we're bringing in are in line with others. In fact, we were just talking about this earlier today that there are significant times where our ticket fees and our ticketing is less than what some other venues who are hosting similar artists are having. Phase two of your question for there is, the thing we can do is try and bring in more contributed revenue with donors, sponsorships. We have a corporate sponsorship manager at the PAC that is trying to deepen the engagement from a corporate support level, not just a private donor support level. That can help offset programming costs and slightly affect ticket pricing. But unless there was a full support and underwriting of every single performer or artist fee at a show, dropping ticket prices significantly because we're trying to create a balance between how much the show costs and how many tickets do we reasonably think we could sell to make sure that at bare minimum, there's a break even to bring that show into our facility. But I think it's a delicate balance of all of those.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
I also just want to speak on that a little bit as well as how this relationship can help us in that sense as well. Currently, we're only doing about five or six shows that we control ticket prices and that we determine what the artists come in. And those are the shows that she's talking about. We're trying to break even the show, really. All of our other shows currently are rentals that we don't even have any control over those prices. However, with this relationship and increased contributed revenue, we can expand the amount of shows that we are actually choosing to bring in, which gives us a little bit more control over those things. Not only what we're bringing in, the diversity of the artists, the, you know, family versus tribute bands versus those, but also ticket prices and those kind of things.
Thank you. And thank you for doing this study.
All right. Councilmember Dobie.
Yeah. Couple of questions. First of all, thank you for this presentation. But what we're talking about, just so I'm clear in mind, trying to raise $750,000 a year, is that?
There is not a dollar amount put onto what the PAC collaborative could do. I think one of the things that we would need to look at is our current standings on where things are at in the climate, what donor base a supporting nonprofit, whether that's for a foundation or another one, has, and then setting up a five-year goal of where we need to get to.
But today, it's zero.
Today, they.
Very small.
Yeah. Today, they help support our Arts for Youth program, which varies between $60,000 and $100,000 a year.
So our baseline is $60,000 to $100,000 right now?
Yeah.
And we're trying, I keep hearing this, $750,000, $760,000. So that's why I asked the question. Is there, what's the goal? What are we trying to get to?
The goal would be identified as we negotiated in M O U. Today, right now, there has not been a goal set.
Okay. But if you're going to set a goal, you got to have a business plan. And I don't know who the salespeople are going to be. And whenever, if you got a goal to make $100,000 or $500,000 or $700,000, what's it cost to make that money? Have you guys got that far at all?
We have not gotten all the way into that just yet.
I mean, would we ever be better just not even try to make that kind of money and just keep doing what we're doing?
The big thing about this collaborative is it's not necessarily a city staff member that would be doing the work of a nonprofit. The nonprofit, which our volunteers would likely have their own staff member that is engaging and deepening this work. But that is part of the next phase in the negotiation process. But that would come back to council.
But the volunteers would need to hire somebody that actually can generate money.
Most nonprofits have a paid staff member, fundraising staff member on their team, and they would likely do the same, whichever nonprofit engaged in this.
And what's that amount that you had to start with? I mean, nobody, I mean, is it a $100,000 person? Is it a 70? Is it, I mean, you can't make money unless you spend money.
Correct. And there are different organizations that you can engage with that have a team of people. So you can pay a fee for that. There is part-time options, full-time options. There are also other grant options that they would be eligible for to help them pay for a staff member over the first three years to get that rolling. So all of those options are on the table. I think the deep details of it would depend on if we are negotiating with the foundation or if we're negotiating with a supporting nonprofit that maybe already has a paid staff member and wants to engage in this process.
Okay. And the negotiations would be how much the city is going to pay to get this started?
No.
Or is it just everybody's going to say, we're just going to?
The negotiation would be how the city is engaged in this. What are our roles and responsibilities? What is the foundation's roles and responsibilities? And how do they engage with the PAC? There wouldn't be any money exchanging hands from the city to the foundation in regards to paying them to get this going.
So I got a question about Edmunds.
For Joe, yeah.
How much, what was the delta? How much were you short when you started your program? And how much did you guys actually raise?
When we started, when we opened in 2006 and the first season of operation, this is off the top of my head. I'd have to go back and look at the detailed numbers. But I can tell you right now, I know for sure, we lost about $1 million right out of the gate in year one. By year five, because we invested in a team and, as you're pointing out, a team and what we needed to be successful in fundraising. And we also, as a result, built better relationships and served the community in bigger, stronger ways. We ended up balancing our budget in year five. So, you know, we were, you know, I can't remember the percentages, but we were roughly halving, you know, our losses year after year until we got to balance.
So in five years, you raised $1 million a year to cover the deficit?
Correct.
What did it cost to do that?
At that time, my guess is about $150,000 to $200,000.
Okay. And then that's ongoing now? They still have a budget of a couple hundred thousand to raise $1 million? Is that still working?
Well, it's grown on both sides, the expenses and the revenue. It's tracked, generally speaking, the same percentage. So they spend more now, but they also make more.
Bring more in. Okay. Thank you.
Council President Kujma.
I'm wondering, I didn't hear any connection with our Arts Commission. Are they going to be part of this entire group? Or any interactions?
The city has continued interactions with our Arts Commission. The Arts Commission has not been deeply engaged in the day-to-day operations over at the Performing Arts Center because we have a venue management company. If the city was running it on their own, that might be a different relationship. But O V G three sixty is the day-to-day operation contractually over there. The third piece to that leg outside of the city would need to be a nonprofit supporting arm. Likely, that nonprofit supporting arm is in communication and regular updates through the Arts Commission and making sure, just like with the rest of the community, that everybody's aware of what are the happenings there? What are the next things coming up? Asking questions about how can we do better? That kind of thing.
Well, I know that they've talked about resident art. You know, and that is what you're discussing. It'd be nice to collaborate.
So the resident artist organizations, we do have existing M O Us for, and we do currently support them to the tune of $150,000 roughly each year. And those relationships have deepened and I don't anticipate those relationships going away. In fact, anything of this nature, like the collaborative, would make those relationships and our ability to provide access to them better.
Okay. Then I just have a couple of suggestions, one of which is, when you talk about the school groups coming, do you make any effort to, probably not pertinent to what we're talking about tonight, but do you make any effort to reach out to the private school groups to bring them in as well as the?
I'll let Stacia talk about it. Simply yes, but I'll let her expand.
Yeah, absolutely. Currently, we kind of give preference to Federal Way Public Schools first because that is the mission behind it. But we reach out to charter schools, private schools, homeschool groups. We reach out to honestly, everybody. And like our upcoming Ada Twist, I want to say we have three or four private school classes that are coming. It's pretty regular.
Oh, that's great. One other suggestion, which is from a resident in our community, a citizen, who talks about the fact that we don't have anything, we always talk about places for kids to go and have something to do, you know, teen center, whatever. But we don't have anything like, I think, this person was telling me about a ballroom in Tacoma where people go to dance. But also, we don't have any place for older people can go to learn to dance, for example. I don't, that's a suggestion. I don't know if something.
No, I love that. Actually, in January, December, January, shortly before I went on my trip, we started talking with the senior commission and senior, what is her title? Somebody with the city who works with the seniors and senior groups on ways that we can do some programs. So those are things, and that's feedback that I love to get. So, those are things, and that's feedback that I love to get, there's things that we can do at the PAC level constantly that I'm looking at. Like last summer, we did our summer family movies, we're planning to do those again. We're trying to find these little ways that we can bring those groups in, so thank you for that.
It'd be kind of interesting to have something, well, you know, when I grew up, we, we had lots of different kinds of things that you could go, you could do the line dancing.
Yeah.
I can't remember what it was called, country type.
Yeah.
Square dancing.
Yes, square dancing, that's what I was thinking of. Also, square dancing, plus also, learning to do the waltz, ballroom style.
Yeah, I love that.
And just something that's, actually, where so many people are really dancing.
I think that's awesome.
A lot of people go on cruises and, you know, it's kind of, it's a different thing. We don't have that in our community, it's just, no idea.
And I think even this collaboration is directing towards being able to make that stuff happen. Something that I deal with on a daily basis is this delicate balance between reaching our revenue goals and trying to, you know, make the subsidy towards the PAC as small as possible, but, but also have these opportunities that are affordable or free that the community can come do. So, that's kind of a balance that we're playing all the time, that the goal would be that with this collaborative and with some of this contributed revenue coming in, we can meet those needs a little bit more closely.
I'll tell this citizen that you are interested in.
Fantastic. Yeah, tell them to reach out to me directly and we'll see what we can do. Thank you.
Councilwoman Walsh.
Yeah. First off, but thank you, I mean, a great, thanks to Joe and all of you for, for this work. And I, I'm glad I went to the, the Arts for Youth event this last week. It was very enlightening and, and I think that it'd be great for all of us on the council to occasionally go and, and observe, observe that.
You're always welcome.
So, you know, I, I have a few questions. You know, it seems like if the, the Arts Foundation were doing that, it's a pretty heavy lift. And is, is that, i- is it realistic to do that heavy of lift? And I'm, I'm kind of looking there at some of the Arts Foundation people.
It, it is a heavy lift, but it is a combined heavy lift. And I know that is one of the biggest reasons why they had their own analysis and their own internal sort of SWAT discussions to make sure for them as an organization, do we move into Phase Three together with the city or do we move in a different direction as a city? And so, I know they have a vote coming up to kind of have those final conversations, but it is a heavy combined lift to move to the next phase. But I think that we have all of the right team in place, even as we went through these working groups, that the shift that we had just with the working groups in how we programmed the communication between the PAC and the foundation and navigating those grew significantly. So, I think we are all hopeful that while it may be a heavy lift, it's, it's worth it.
Okay. All right. Next, I mean, are there other agreements that other cities have that would be using kind of as the initial blueprint to start working on?
We've navigate, I'll let Joe kind of jump in here in a second and we can piggyback off each other, but we've navigated between what do our resident artist MOUs look like? What does our contract with OVG look like? And making sure that we're not violating anything that we already have in place. So, I don't think there's necessarily a template that we're going to play off of. We're going to structure and build it on our own and then work with legal to make sure that we've got everything buttoned up.
Okay. And then, speaking of OVG, I mean, was it a, I, they've been doing a great job and, and I love the job that Stacia's doing.
Thank you.
But was it perhaps a mistake to have a, a, a for-profit company do it instead of starting with a, establishing a nonprofit to actually manage it, like Joe says it's some of the other cities have done? Was that a?
I don't personally believe so. I mean, I think everyone can devise their own opinions in regards to what would be the best opportunity. One thing to look at within our venue is that we not only needed to navigate a very robust, brand-new state-of-the-art facility and did not, at that time, have a nonprofit existing that could step in and take that role. Also, we ended up in a global pandemic that it benefited us greatly, having a corporate organization helping us navigate those times and keeping our building open for the city staff that was around and ultimately, still driving revenue and the little bit of community engagement that we could have had at that time. Stacia.
Obviously, I was not here in part of that, but I do think that it's beneficial to see as well. I have seen in the industry, and it's been very unique, I did theaters before I even got into OVG and have a large background in theaters and how that works. A lot of theaters are moving towards management companies, and I couldn't tell you specifically why that is, but OVG in the last few years has brought on almost 40 new theaters. So, I think that this is a model that, interestingly, things are going to, but I do think that it's interesting to see, and I would speak to it and say that there is still that missing piece, and I think it's a new path that we're going to be paving of what that looks like and could be, you know, a future study for other venues to see how we got that and made this successful for everybody.
All right. Thank, thank you for that, those insights. I, I guess my last question is, is, is there any, what's the risk to the city with entering into this type of MOU?
Currently, I mean, we have an MOU with them and the things that we've discussed, there isn't a major risk to the city. The only risk would be that zero is raised and we're in the same position that we are today, but that's not really a risk. That would just be an unfortunate side effect of nobody doing any work, I think. So, no, the risk to the city is extremely minimal. I think that all parties only have something to gain from moving forward.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much, all of you.
Councilmember Dovey.
Yeah, I've got a couple of follow-up questions, if I may. And I tend to agree with Councilmember Walsh, this is a, a heavy lift. I mean, we see it in all our service clubs across the, the community and, you know, this is, this is a big project, but like OVG, do they have a department that actually does this? Are we trying to recreate something that we could just pay somebody to do and so that lift is not as heavy and it's more slanted that way?
Just to clarify, a department that handles nonprofit and contributed revenue?
No. I guess what, what I'm hearing from my background, we're trying to start a sales organization to go raise $750,000. I mean, when I take it down to the basics, we're trying to, our citizens want to get engaged, which is great. They want to support the theater, which is great. We want to bring in more programs, which is great. But we're asking a lot of volunteers who don't have a lot of financial incentive to go raise a bunch of money to make it work, which is good, but it's, is the organization we already hired to manage it, do they have a turnkey program where they bring in three people that are paid X amount a, a year and they already know how to do this? And you start up and then you supplement with our volunteers so we don't have to duplicate it?
Yeah, I'll, the one thing I'll say before I pass it off to them is, the engagement and the money raised by OVG could, just like we have a salesperson on site right now deeply engaging in corporate sponsorships. Nonprofit and donor engagement from a, a community perspective is not something that a for-profit organization specializes in nor may be super successful in.
Why not?
And they haven't shown that track record to this date. And we've, we've looked at some of those other OVG venues throughout that study. The second piece of that is, I would say, it's less of a sales organization. The thing we kept talking about through this working group is that the heart of the mission is the people that are in our community, they want to engage in our community and foster those donor relationships. So, if you break it down very, very simply, yes, you could look at it as a sales organization, but I think we need to keep the heart of the mission at it, which is where they've deeply engaged.
And that's, that's my base, I'm getting down to the foundation. I'm not, I don't mean it like that.
Right.
That's what we're trying to do.
The foundation has regularly stayed engaged, even through this process, because of their heart for this and their want to dive deeper and be a part of the next step in arts and culture in Federal Way. Not just the PAC, which is our, you know, beautiful crown jewel, but how do we deeply keep the community engaged? And I'll let Cindy speak to that, but we've had some of those conversations, right? What does this mean and what is the overall output? So.
I just want to add that we, we don't know, but there is a great power in this collaboration. And so, we would get, we haven't worked out any kind of details, but if you can imagine the OVG staff helping to operate these fundraisers so that we, we, we bring in the money under the, the name of the foundation, but we have the city behind us giving us the space to, to do these fundraisers. We have OVG helping us run the fundraisers, you know, all these kinds of ways we can raise money, not just fundraisers, but when, when we think we have three teams all working together, the, the magic is, is, we can't quantify it at this point, but we have to think outside the box. It's not just the, the foundation raising this money. We have to do it as a team, together.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Gane.
Yeah. First one we're going to have is actually for Joe. Joe, you mentioned, and one of the things that was brought up by Councilmember Dovey was the original startup cost. Do you still think about 150,000 to 200,000 is what the foundation would need to pony up in order to get the ball rolling for this particular project?
It's a good question. The market is very competitive for qualified fundraising professionals right now. And so, I, you know, I, I can't, I'm not actually working in the field at this moment, so I don't know what the going rates are at this point. But I do know that, you know, something we always said was, once, once you have the person that is the right fit for the, for the job, the costs of fundraising otherwise are very low. The investments you have to make in, in materials and, and things like that are not as large as they would be, for instance, in marketing or other, other areas of the organization. So, I, you know, I wish I could answer that question straight up for you, but I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 for this particular moment would probably cover a, a professional and, and the materials that you would need to get started.
Okay. I mean, I'm not looking for exacts, but it gives us at least a ballpark. And that kind of brings me into the second part. Is that what the foundation is looking at doing? Are they looking at fundraising to get money to hire a professional fundraiser? Or are we looking at, are they looking at being the ones who are going to be running the fundraising themselves?
They would be running the fundraising themselves, and the dynamic that happens between a professional fundraiser that's working with them is that's where a lot of donor relationships and day-to-day work is happening, where maybe the volunteers don't have that capacity. So, they would have a paid staff member that's part of their overall running the fundraising and bringing in all of that stuff.
So, if we were to move this forward and we actually start having that deeper conversation with the MOU, the next time we have this conversation, would you guys be presenting us with how much they plan on raising, what the actual game plan would be before the MOU is signed? Or are we looking at having to sign an MOU and then determining that?
They would go hand-in-hand with each other. Presentation would be what the structure of the MOU is, what are the roles and responsibilities, what are some goals that we've set out so that way we have eyes wide open moving forward before we sign anything.
Gotcha. The next question I had is, you had mentioned corporate sponsorship, and I do know that OVG 360 had brought that onboard. Have we made any progress with that at the moment?
Yes, I would love to speak on that. We did have some smaller deals that went through last year. We have some deals that are, have already been signed and are going in. If you go into the PAC, you can see some of the things that we've done, not only with restaurants in the area, but also some other local businesses. And we're currently working on a wine sponsorship deal, so we're currently working on those and we have a lot on the works that I think we're going to see a lot of growth over this year in that area, for sure.
Is that something will be presented on the monthly reports?
Yes, I'm planning on restructuring it a little bit for this upcoming year for my 2025 reports to start including that. It was kind of rolled into another area because we, there wasn't really that space before. But yeah, we're planning on starting to break it out as we move into 2025.
Right. And then, as to the dancing, I currently have taken dance lessons at Arthur Marie.
Love that, okay.
Free shot out for them. But they do have a mobile dance floor and that's something that if you have not talked to, it's, it might be something that would bring together two different arts groups together.
No, I love that. Thank you so much.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hunda.
Thank you. I think when we talk about fundraising, we need to, excuse me, be really, very realistic about how much we could possibly fundraise. I know I'm involved in several organizations that, excuse me, that in the last year or so haven't raised as much from events that we have in the past. And it's a sign of the times, you know, things are tough for a lot of people. And as we go forward with this, I think we need to be just very realistic and not put numbers out there that are too, that may not be achievable.
Understood.
All right. Council, any other comments, questions? All right. Autumn, anything else?
That was it. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody. I appreciate your presentation. Thank you for the work you do. Great to see you. Stacia, great work over there at the PAC. I really appreciate your work. All right.